There's a part panel taking up some of the screen.
I think we can close that.
We're good?
Chair, we're live.
We're live?
Yeah.
When we do present her, we're gonna make that the main focus in there. And when there's the discussion, we're gonna keep it in grid mode.
Yes, Chairman.
Go ahead, Chairman. I call the order, the first teleconference planning commission meeting in the history of the city of Newport Beach. I'm gonna turn this off now. How is everyone?
Good.
Good evening.
Great, I see commissioners in there. I see people walking around, this is gonna be an interesting event. Staff, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. Since I'm here, I'll stand up and lead it. And remember, I can see everybody, even the audience, they better stand up. Come on, up, up, up. Ready? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, on the ground. Okay, all right, off to the races. Roll call, staff, would you please call that?
I will take roll call orally, please say your name. Commissioner Rosin.
Here.
Commissioner Kleinman.
Present.
Commissioner Klaustre-Meyer.
Here.
Commissioner Elmore.
Here.
Secretary Lowry.
Here.
Chair Wagen.
Here.
Your head.
Okay, good. All right, I want to thank, thank you all, some notes on how we're gonna proceed tonight. As you can see, we have joined with other governmental meetings by going virtual. Some cities have invited the public comments only to be submitted in writing and then read them into the record, rather than do that, our staff has worked hard to function this meeting, which were live, real time public comments, three minutes or less, please. We will be using one phone number all night for public comments. Is everybody hearing me all right? I will announce the phone number numerous times. When it comes up, it will also flash on the bottom of your screen while people are watching on MB TV or streaming on the internet. Please know that there are 40 second delay between what you hear on the phone and what you see on the screen. You'll get used to it. We ask that you mute your TV or any other device electronically so that we don't have any interference. When you call, you will place, be placed on hold and in turn, in that order, allowed to speak. Please note that only 20 callers can be placed on hold at any time. If you call on the lines busy, call back in a few moments. We appreciate the written comments on other items presented to us tonight, which have been distributed to the commission. All right, at this portion of the meeting, we do public comments. Publican is allowed to talk about any non-agenda item for three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record and print it on the blue sheet, probably in front of you somewhere. Those calling in, here's the number, 949-270-8165. During the meeting provide, to provide public comments on the agenda. First, we're gonna hear from the community room. Hello, community room.
Yes, thank you, this is staff, there are no public comments from the community room.
Thank you, do we have any public comments from on the phone line? Hearing none? Let's move on, request for continuances.
None at this time.
None at the time. Consent items, item number one, minutes of March 5, 2020. Comment on this, please, call in, 949-270-8165, just like a telephone. Recommended action. Comments? Hearing none? Additional comments from the commissioners, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, and I think Mr. Moser had sent some comments to incorporate those to the minutes.
Accepted. Do I have a second? Come on, practice.
Seconded.
Commissioner Kleinman, seconded it.
We got one caller, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Timeout, we have one call in. Do you present the call in?
Is it live?
Are they ordering food from a restaurant?
Are we there?
Moving right along.
The caller's there, do you want to address the caller?
Okay.
It's on the speaker.
Is that the CP?
Hi there, yes, this is Charles Globe calling. I wanted to note that the access to the video is on the city council page, that's not clear from the agenda, it's not at the planning commission page, it's where we normally look to watch the city council. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. So noted. Any other remote call ins, comments, questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Do you want to go down the list, Chairman?
Commissioner Rosen? Commissioner Rosen? Number one. Kleinman? Commissioner Klausster-Meyer? There's a hand. Commissioner Elmore? Commissioner Lowry, please?
Aye.
Commissioner Wagen?
Aye.
And so do I vote for this, okay. Staff, unanimous? Do we need to do anything else? Moving along, study session. Secretary Lee Lowry will refuse himself for this item for the time being.
Thank you.
We'll call you back.
Sounds good.
Oh, Lee, Lee Lowry, please state for the record the reason you are taking yourself out of this.
Yes, I have a business relationship with the applicant.
All right, thank you. All right, item number two. Newport Airport Village Plan Community PA 2014-225. Site location is norally portion of campus track generally bounded by birch and campus MacArthur and the extension of Corinthian Way. Remember, to comment on this item, please call 949-270-8165 and make a donation. Staff?
Yes, good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners, it's good to be with you tonight. We are just checking one item real quick here and hope to be with you in a second.
We need to be able to share.
Where are we?
She's doing it.
We're good?
She's sharing the presentation.
Oh.
It'll come up on your screen.
Okay, now here we. Here we go, here we go. Voila, here we go. Thank you so much for your patience and it's good to be here with you, even though we're not all together. Greg Ramirez with the Planning Division. And before I, before I go on, I'd like to mention that the representatives for the applicant are here, Patrick Sater and Sean Masler, and following my presentation, they will have one of theirs as well. So the item tonight, as Chair mentioned, is Newport Airport Village. And there's a vicinity map there that kind of shows the general area where it is, up off MacArthur, off campus. And we'll have a few more exhibits showing where it's at in a moment. So the study session tonight, this is a discussion item only, there's no action. Staff will give a presentation, the applicant will have a presentation as well, and then of course, public comments and commission comments and questions as well. So before we jump into some of the exhibits, just wanted to say the site here is about 16 and a half acres and it's located in what we call the campus track, that's an old name of that track, that's up, right there across campus from the airport. And the general plan of the zoning currently allows 0.5 floor ratio, which is about 358,000 square feet. If you've been up to the side or know the area, you know it's kind of an eclectic mix of uses, retail services, little restaurants, there's some offices, and of course, the vehicle rental facilities, which are, there's several of those in that area. So here's a vicinity map that again helps you get your, get your bounds a little bit. Of course, the notable adjacent land use is John Wayne Airport. So the applicant has applied for approval of a general plan amendment, a plan community development plan, which is the zoning for the, for the site, and a development agreement. So the general plan amendment is essentially to change the land use designation from airport office to mixed use H2, which is the mixed use designation for those mixed use designated properties up in the airport area, and it is unique to the airport area only. And their, their request is to convert 61,000 of that 358,000 square feet to 329 dwelling units, and I'll get into that conversion issue in just a minute, not an issue, but I'll explain it more. And so that would leave them with about 297,000 square feet for other commercial development, for office and retail, things like that. One very important thing about this general plan amendment, it's not requesting any increase above the existing general plan. So the conversion of units in these 329 units that are, that they're asking for are already in the general plan, and again, I'll get to that in a few slides. The plan community development plan is again the zoning, so they want to rezone the property from that office airport to plan community. And we're reviewing now what's called the Newport Village Plan Community. And of course, before this comes back to you at a public hearing, we will distribute that plan community ahead of time so everyone can have the opportunity to review that. And then they're also requesting approval of a development agreement. We don't have the terms or any draft terms for that at this time, and again, that'll be forthcoming here over the next couple months as we work through the details of that. So again, the project overview would result in, the project itself would result in about 297,000 square feet of development capacity for commercial uses, those 329 multi-units I mentioned. And they're also proposing an affordable housing component to this. And the way the density bonus laws work in the state, you can get up to a 35% density bonus, and that, that equates 35% of 329 is 110, about 115. And that percentage is based on the income levels of those affordable housing units. So if you provide very low units, you get a certain percentage of density bonus use. If you provide moderate, you get another percentage. And again, those details are again, still be working out, but there will be a density components, density bonus and affordable housing component to the project. And of course, all future development, whether it's the residential or the commercial, would have to comply with the development standards that are in that plan community development plan. So I want to get in a little bit with the conversion and how the residential units work up in the airport area. So back in 2006, when the general plan was comprehensively updated, 2,200 dwelling units were approved in the airport area. Now, 550 of those are what we refer to as additive, and so that's what Cole has applied for, and Uptown Newport has some of those additive units as well. Remaining 1,650, let's, let's the property owner or developer convert underlying allowed land uses, so they can take some of their floor area and convert that to residential dwelling units. Now that's based on a traffic trip calculation. So for example, 1,000 square feet of commercial retail results in the five, five dwelling units approximately, based on, based on a trip neutral conversion. So in this case, they'd be converting 61,000 square feet of general commercial into 329 dwelling units, and so that's what the general plan amendment is for. It's to, it's for them to have access to some of that 1,650 dwelling units that are already in the general plan. A note about density bonus units now, those aren't included in the proposed amendment because state law says that density bonus units do not count toward any general plan limitations, and that applies to all cities, including charter cities like Newport Beach. So this, this slide here shows the table of where those residential units are. As you can see, the replacement units on that first column, there's the 1,650, and you can see that Uptown took some of those, Newport crossings was kind of a more recent one, I think, that some of you commissioners heard and deliberated on. And, and you can see here, the Newport Airport Village is asking for 329 of those, that would leave about 430 replacement units left. And then if you go down the columns more, you can see where the additive units are, the 550 additive units, you can see that Uptown Newport, of course, included some of those, and the Cole project is requesting 260 of those, and so that would exhaust the number of additive units available. And if you further go down the chart, you can see that some of these other projects had density bonus units as well. So here's some, here's some graphics, kind of give everybody a little bit more geography on where, where we're talking to make sure we're at. And as you can see, this is, this is what we call the airport area in the general plan, so this is the full view of the airport area. So up in the corner up there, the northwest early corner, you can see the blue is the boundaries of the proposed Newport Airport Village. You can see there, that'd be changing the general plan designation to that MUH2, so it's basically recoloring the map in that salmon color. And again, that would give them the proper general plan land use designation so they could have access to those 329 dwelling units that they're requesting. This is a little closer, a closer up view of the same slide, there's the airport office general plan designation, and there's that MUH2 land use category that they're requesting. Now you can see there on this slide a little better, you can see that 65 CNEL noise contour, and I'm gonna talk about that in a few slides there and what that, what kind of implications that has to the project and the design of the project. Zoning, I'll go through these, the same, same thing with zoning, zoning is called the OA, general plan is called the AO, I'm not sure why we did that or why that happened, but office airport, airport office, and you can see there's the project boundaries, and again, they would be requesting plan community zoning, and so that's what it would look like on the zoning map. So to the airport now, so the airport, the airport environs land use plan for John Wayne Airport has two major, I guess restrictions or standards in there with regards to development capacity. Now, one is related to the 65 CNEL noise contour. So basically what, what the ALU says, and what our general plan says and zoning code, it says, we don't want any residential put in an area where the noise is higher than 65 CNEL, because that's essentially too loud for residential development, and it would start, start to, you know, impair people, and it's not a good place for, for people to live. And the second one is, the airport has safety zones mapped around the airport, around different runways, there's different types of safety zones, and they have different types of development that are allowed in those safety zones. But again, essentially, if it's within a safety zone, the plan does not want to see residential there. And finally, this proposal would have to go to the John Wayne Airport Land Use Commission for their, for their review, and what they would do, they would either find it consistent with the airport environs land use plan, or they would, or they would not. Now, if they did not find it consistent, there is a way for the city council to override that determination, and that's essentially another public notice, and there's, there's a few procedural steps that have, have to happen with that. But we're not right at that point yet, and we can probably talk about more, talk about that more at the planning commission public hearing when we get there. So just a little bit more about the airport policies and what this does with the development or residential on this particular site here. So there you see the site outline or highlighted in the yellow. The red line there is that 65 CNEL line, so residential has to stay to the east of that, easterly of that. And then the green lines there shows the safety zones. So this slide here shows the area in orange, and that, that would be the area that is outside both the 65 CNEL and the safety zones, and that would be the area that would be at least appropriate as far as meeting the policies of the airport environs land use plan, our general planners and our zoning code with regard to where residential development can occur. There are a couple other areas around there, you can see a couple little triangles that are outside of both, but I think this area here that's shown on the exhibit is where there, they would be, the future development would go. So part of their plan, the community development plan, they have considered this conceptual land use map, and they're kind of faint on here, but you can see, I mean, I have a bigger one, you kind of can see those boundaries there for the noise and for the, the safety zones. And you can see in orange there, that's where they would be envisioning where the residential would be developed. Now, one thing that's important to remember about this application is, the request is just for the legislative amendment, so just the general plan amendment, the plan community or the zoning amendment, and the, and the development agreement. So there's not a specific development proposed at this time, and so that's why the plan community development plan, the plan community text, as we often refer to it, it's very important that we look very closely at those development and design standards in that document, because that's what's gonna, that's what's gonna guide and regulate future, future development and future land uses on the site. One thing I wanted to point out is, the general plan does call for a half acre or an acre of park with these types of residential developments in the airport area. And due to the, due to the constraints of the site with the CNEL and the hazard areas, right now, the applicant is requesting a waiver of that policy that's in the general plan, and the policy does say that a waiver can be requested if it's determined that, you know, it's not appropriate to put parks there. But in lieu of putting an actual park there, there would be in lieu park fees paid, and then that, therefore, that, those could support the development of another park maybe in this area, or the, you know, or, you know, a larger park, you know, enlarging the existing park. So there would be in lieu fees paid to offset the fact that a park isn't actually being developed. And I know the applicants will, will talk more on their presentation about the, their plan community document. So of course, SEQA is required, of course, with the general plan amendment, zoning code amendment, and what, what we're using for the SEQA documentation in this case is what's called an addendum to a previously approved EIR. And that's essentially, you know, a SEQA review that looks at a previous EIR and determines that what the applicants are requesting is, was essentially studied or very similar to what was studied in those previous environmental documents. And the main thing to remember is, when you do an addendum, you can't identify any new impact. So if there's a new impact that's created by your project, an addendum won't work. So we're looking at this right now, and what we're, and what we're writing the addendum off, or basing it off, is our two previous EIRs. The first is the 2006 General Plan Update Program EIR, and that was done when the city comprehensively updated the general plan back in 2006. So one thing I want to remind everyone is, again, that this request does not increase any development above what's allowed in the existing general plan. And as a matter of fact, in that previous general plan, they studied more dwelling units than actually were approved, those 2,200 units, they were studying 4,400 units in that 2006 general plan. So this development not only matches what's in the existing general plan that was approved, but it's less than what was studied back in 2006. And we're also looking at the 2014 land use element supplemental EIR, and that was a supplemental EIR to that 2006 general plan update. So you might recall back in 2014, there was an effort to amend the land use element, make some changes. That was the project that went for a vote because of Charter Section 423, a vote to the public, and that vote, it failed in the vote, but that EIR was still certified and it's still valid. And that particular EIR, that studied increases of 329 dwelling units on this particular site, and it also studied an additional 238,000 square feet of office on the, on the campus track in its entirety. So the campus track's about 26 acres, but this 16 acres is part of that campus track, and therefore, it would have been allotted, you know, 65% or so of that 238,000 square feet. So again, what the applicant is requesting here is much less than what was studied in 2014. And again, we are completing that addendum, currently we're working through it, and we don't expect there to be any new impacts anticipated, and we believe that the addendum to those previous EIRs is the appropriate SEQA documentation for this proposal. So what would happen next with this application? It would go through the public hearing process that always goes with legislative requests or legislative amendment requests, we'd have our notice planning commission public hearing, in between the planning commission and city council, we'd go to ALU for that, ALU review for consistency or not consistency with the, with, they determine that, whether it's not, whether or not they think it's consistent or not with the airport environs land use plan, and then of course, there'd be city council public hearings following that. That essentially completes my presentation, and of course, we are, there's some contact information there up on the screen, if anybody would like to reach me, or they can just call City Hall, ask for Greg and planning, and people know how to find me here. And that completes our, our staff presentation at this time, and we're of course available for questions, and I know Sean and Patrick, who I mentioned earlier, they're downstairs in another conference room, and I know they have their presentation lined up as well. So thank you for your time and your attention. Thank you very much. Was I heard?
Yes.
Okay.
Does it enable the camera?
Yes.
All right, thank you. At this point, commissioners, if you have any questions of staff, hold up your hand and I will call you. Seeing none? As the chairman always has a question or two. Legislative approval only. Explain that.
So the legislative approval, so legislative requests are general plan amendments and ordinances. So those are things that require city council approval, they're essentially law essentially, whereas a lot of, a lot of the items that come before the planning commission, I guess they call those quasi judicial, and those are the conditional use permits and the track maps and things of that sort, that basically are implementing the ordinances and the, and the policies that are on the books as approved by the city council.
All right. You mentioned in your presentation either a half acre or an acre of park land. That's a big difference.
Yeah, we believe, we believe it's a half acre or an acre, and I'm sorry, we can't be more clear on that, but we are working through that, kind of as, not as we speak, but, and you know, during this time, we're, we're working through those park requirements and policies, they're very specific to the airport area, and we're looking closely at those. So I apologize for not being able to be specific on the half acre or the acre. But as I mentioned, the in lieu fee would be required to be paid should those parks not be provided, you know, by the developer.
Very good, those are my comments. At this time, commissioners, any ex parte communication with the applicant or his consultants? They're consultants. Raise your hand. Mr. Rosen?
I had a conversation with the applicant, with the applicant's representative earlier today.
Commissioner Klaustre-Meyer?
I also had a conversation earlier today with one of the applicant's consultants.
All right. Everybody else? No comment?
No comment?
None.
All right, very good. All right, at this time I'll open the public hearing. It's so funny to look out there and there's nobody there. Um, remember phone in nine four nine two seven zero eight one six five if you're not in the building. In the meantime, um, we will let the, do we have any comments or questions from the, um, public?
I believe it's the applicant's presentation.
All right. Meanwhile, we'll move on. The, uh, commissioners, uh, no questions, if public comments, uh, let's go to the, um, applicant's presentation. Okay?
Thank you, chairman. Can you hear me? This is Patrick Strader.
Yes, I can hear you.
And everybody else, I assume. Let us know if you can. We'll wait a second here to launch the, uh, PowerPoint and just give a brief introduction because I wanted to give you the history of the project, which I believe will answer some of the questions that I heard the chair ask of staff. Um, we're very pleased to be here this evening, uh, on this project. It's been a very long road. Let me take you back to twenty thirteen as the city of Newport Beach was doing its general plan update and impaneled a, uh, land use element update committee. So back in twenty thirteen, John Saunders, well, actually I, I should go back to two thousand and six. Uh, in two thousand and six, when the city of Newport Beach did a general plan update, uh, as, as our planner, uh, pointed out for you, there was a, uh, EIR certified and the voters of Newport Beach voted for and approved the general plan update that approved, uh, certain development for the overall city, including, uh, this, this airport overlay plan. I use the word overlay. Some of the staff doesn't like that word, but, um, that's, that's how I refer to it. An area of the airport area of Newport Beach where residential was deemed to be appropriate, uh, use. And there was a cloud of units that were additive units, new ones. And there was a cloud of units that could be used for replacement of existing projects in the airport area. This project in two thousand and six, John Saunders, the owner, was participating in that general plan update and went through that whole process. Then again, in two thousand and thirteen, as the city impaneled this, uh, land use element update committee, I sat down with John and we put together the plan that's basically in front of you this evening. We can talk about how it's, uh, evolved over time, but we went through nine hearings with the city of Newport Beach, uh, land use element update committee that was impaneled as part of the general plan update. And as a result of that committee's recommendation to include this project in the residential area of the, uh, airport area of Newport Beach, the city council as part of that, um, general plan amendment in twenty fourteen, approved the use of residential for this site and certified the EIR that analyzed the change in the use for the overall programmatic area. Unfortunately, the voters of Newport Beach in twenty fourteen, um, or fortunately or not, it's, it's just a fact, they voted down the measure Y general plan amendment, but that certified EIR and that policy directive from the city council that this was an appropriate area to add residential into the, the John Wayne Airport area of Newport Beach, um, both of those caused me in December of twenty fourteen to file an application for a general plan update to allow a standalone general plan amendment to allow us to put residential on this site. So to answer the chair's question, why is it a legislative approval? The idea here, and it's based upon several examples in other parts of the city that have been done previously. And a former, um, council member, Ed Salich, who was very involved in the twenty fourteen general plan update suggested at that time that the best way to, to do this process would be to first change the use to allow the residential on the site, which we're attempting to do through this application. And then to come back once we knew that residential was allowed with an actual site development plan that the commission could approve based upon the actual proposals of the residential project in front of you. So over the last six years, uh, that's what we've been doing with your staff. We've, we've tried several times to go in several different directions, all collaboratively with staff, never, uh, never hostile. There was never any disagreement. There were just different, uh, theories, policies and input, including most recently, uh, SCAG's most recent regional housing needs allocation to the city of Newport Beach that caused us to change the project in its last iteration and take it from a one hundred percent market rate residential project to a, um, mixed affordability density bonus with affordable housing in the project. So since twenty fourteen, uh, when the city council voted and said that this was an appropriate location for residential, we have continued to process through your city staff, an application to legislatively do that. And then because there are the cloud units and the additive units that are available and anybody in the airport area could go out and file an application for those units, we have also asked for a development agreement that would give this site the ability to have the guarantee that they would have the right to ask for residential, but not the guaranteed right to build whatever project, uh, we end up bringing forward in a site development review. So that's, that's a key point that I wanted to make clear. Approving this project as presented to you says that residential could happen on the site and under the development agreement, it gives, uh, the John Saunders properties the right to those units for a period of time. But it requires us to come back to the planning commission with an actual residential plan, but we would actually have the knowledge that we have the right to do it under the general plan and the zoning on the site. And so when we bring back the specific site development review, this planning commission would have a further discretionary opportunity to vote yes or no on that project. It would not be by right. And if you didn't like something that was a part of that particular, uh, residential design, you could send us back to, to try again and the DA would only vest the units for the period of time of the development agreement. So, um, Greg did such a good job with his overhead presentation that I am not going to, uh, spend a huge amount of time on ours, but since we made one, let me, uh, do my best here to try to share it with you. There we go. So we'll go very quickly and if you have any specific questions, we can always come back to them. But, um, you've seen the location, so I won't spend any time on that. The site development, uh, was really driven by the noise contours of John Wayne Airport. And also the general plan has a requirement in it that an application such as this be on a site of ten acres. So the reason why you see an application with this much property in it is because we wanted, in working with staff, we wanted to make sure that the application was for a ten acre or greater site. However, the residential portion of this application is on a piece that's smaller, um, that fits inside or outside of the noise contour lines as depicted in this, uh, particular exhibit. Let me move to the next one here. We've gone through the history that, uh, it's a mixed use project because it's going to have residential on the, uh, the noise okay side and it's going to maintain the existing commercial on the other side of the project. Uh, our intensity that we're requesting matched that that was in the twenty fourteen general plan. Um, we did change the project to include affordable housing with, working with your staff and attempting to, uh, change the project to meet the needs of the city of Newport Beach. We are currently negotiating with your staff, a development agreement that will provide, um, a ben- a community benefit fee plus additional items. Um, and now might be a good time to just take a second to talk about the park. Um, having just processed another project nearby, we, we, um, realized that there is a community level city park that's right nearby, but we also realize that trying to build a half acre city community park right across from John Wayne Airport in the noise contour line probably isn't, uh, the best plan for the residents of the city of Newport Beach going forward. So what we are asking the city to contemplate with regard to this project is a payment of a in lieu fee for that, uh, community level park so that the funds created by this project can be invested in other existing community parks or through the creation of additional community parks wherever the city council and the city of Newport staff feel that they would be best deployed. So that speaks to one of the other questions that, uh, the chairman had there. Um, so we are proposing a new planned community development plan and that will basically create custom zoning for the site that the future, uh, site development package will have to adhere to should you approve that. Uh, the planned community district will provide for the development of a coordinated and cohesive mixed use project. Um, and the rest of it just tells you that how we're, uh, putting the plan together for the future development. So we've already gone through the description with our, our planner here. He presented that to you, but in sub area one, up to three hundred and twenty-nine multifamily base residential units under the state law, which would grant up to a hundred and fifteen density bonus units. And in sub area two, there would be up to two hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-two square feet of commercial and office uses. Um, so you can see the, quickly the sub areas that we just talked about. Um, these are what are contained in each of them. That's what we just described. So, um, let's, sorry. So what we are asking for as part of the proposed package in front of you is a zone change from the office airport zoning to the new planned community Newport Airport Village Plan Community Text that we have drafted for the site, which would control future, uh, discretionary approvals. We're looking for a general plan amendment from airport office and supporting uses to the MUH two mixed use horizontal, uh, general plan designation. And just, just to remind you, this is the action that was taken by the city council in twenty fourteen that was, uh, part of the overall measure Y approvals. Um, so the third item would be adoption of the Newport Airport Village Plan Community Development Plan. Uh, the fourth would be this development agreement between the applicant and the city of Newport Beach that would go in front of the city council for approval. Um, and then future anticipated entitlements. After all of those we, we presume are approved, then we would have the ability to put residential on the site and we would have a guiding document that we would then put together a specific site plan that met those requirements and came back for discretionary approval to the planning. Um, just briefly on the affordability, no fewer than five percent of the residential base units will be set aside for very low income households or no fewer than ten percent of the residential base units will be set aside for low income households or no fewer than ten percent of the residential base units will be set aside for moderate income households. Uh, and the applicant will receive a density bonus that corresponds to the provided level of affordability. This is the California state density bonus law and the applicant is proposing merely that the, the state law as it exists be the guiding principle on the affordability, uh, for the project. Um, architectural design considerations, uh, as if you read through the, the planned community development text, we're looking for unified, high quality, all of the things that Newport Beach is known for. Building elevation should employ architectural treatments with articulation and modulation of mass. We don't want it to look like a big, uh, single monolithic structure. Abundant use of landscaping with interior courtyards for, for open space, uh, integration of the residential and the non-residential u- uses through pedestrian connections, landscape and other physical connections. And office and commercial building siting should be oriented around the public spaces, uh, so it can be broken up as best it can. So our planner, Greg, talked to you about the CEQA review. Um, just briefly, the two thousand and six and twenty fourteen, uh, EIRs both looked at this project in different ways and we have currently prepared an addendum to look at the specifics of this proposal that has, uh, looked at those previous documents and taken that information into consideration. It can, the addendum compares the project to the impacts analyzed in oh six and fourteen. So, um, Greg already went through this, so I'll skip over this, but needless to say, oh six and fourteen, we are not exceeding in the proposal either of the, uh, studies that were previously certified. So, uh, this is the site plan for conceptual purposes that, uh, Greg referred to. If you, if you look closely, the yellow has been cited, uh, with regard to the, uh, the airport noise overlay that, uh, Greg referred to. The purple is hypothetical sighting of the commercial property on the other parcels. I should point out on the far right, I'm not sure, I don't think you can see my, uh, cursor, maybe they can. Uh, the far right is not a part of this proposal. It's an existing office building that, uh, the owner has no plans to, to change that use. And there is another parcel in sort of the middle of the project that, uh, midway through the last six years, uh, one of the prod- property owners of a very small sliver of a medical office building in there, who had previously granted us permission to file this application on her request, decided that she wanted to make a different use of, of parts of her building and decided that she didn't want to, uh, continue in this mixed use proposal. So, um, staff and we worked together, both of us agreed that her, uh, particular single parcel in the middle of it didn't really change the overall proposal. So, um, that parcel has been removed from the overall proposal. We, we included some conceptual imagery just so you could see the types of structures that would be within the densities proposed for this site. None of these are, are, we're not asking you to say, uh, you know, the one on the bottom left looks too modern, which it probably does, or the one on the upper right looks, uh, you know, too something else, but these are just, uh, density descriptions to show you conceptual imagery for the types of density on the proposal in front of you. So with that, uh, let me figure out how to terminate my, there we go. So we're back to us here. Uh, we'd be happy to answer any of your questions. Uh, with regard to the airport land use commission, uh, we filed a FAA notice with them of the proposed project. We received a determination of no hazard to air, uh, navigation on our first pass. We made a couple of changes, um, with regard to what we were submitting to them. So we are anxiously awaiting the finding of D and E on the second one. So I think with that, I've answered all of the questions that I heard previously and we'd love to answer any questions that you all might have.
Very good. Um, commissioners, if you have any questions for the applicant, hold up your hand and I will call him. Commissioner Klostermeyer?
Yeah, I noticed that there were some additional materials that were sent out yesterday and one was from the John Wayne Airport that, uh, is currently opposed to the project. I'm just curious if you can share any of the conversations that you're having with them right now.
Well, I'll, I'll start and maybe Greg will jump in and, uh, Sean can also kick me, but the, the traditional pathway to an entitlement is you go through your discretionary approval at the planning commission and then you go to a hearing at the John Wayne Airport Land Use Commission. So we truly haven't had any discussions with them yet. The, um, the FAA study, the aeronautical study is a different beast. So I have been in communication with the FAA and like I said, the, the first application was a finding of no hazard. Second one, we believe will be the exact same. The, uh, John Wayne Airport Land Use Commission is a different beast altogether and one that we will go to, uh, after our planning commission hearing. Um, I will state for the record that in many cases, uh, multifamily and residential projects in- for the record that in many cases, multifamily and residential projects in this area are found to be inconsistent with the airport environs land use plan by the Airport Land Use Commission. And in many cases, the cities of Irvine, Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, et cetera, end up overriding the John Wayne Airport Land Use Commission. And in the case of the 2014 City of Newport Beach General Plan Update, Greg, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the Newport Beach City Council did override the Airport Land Use Commission's finding of inconsistency with the ALUC for the 2014 EIR. So that hopefully answers your question.
If I could just add a few things. I think that the concerns or the questions raised in the letter from the airport will be addressed almost entirely once the airport and the ALUC have a chance to review our proposed plan community text. There were questions about, for example, whether residential uses would be located within the 65 CNEL. And if you look at the PC text, they're prohibited. We prohibit them. There were questions about sound attenuation commitments that we would make for the project, given the proximity of the residential to the airport. And the PC text talks about the Cal Green standards and the sound transmission STE class of the materials that we're going to use. So we're hopeful that a lot of the questions will be resolved once they learn more about the project.
All right. Any further comments, Commissioner Faust Meyer on that answer?
No, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wigan?
Yes, this might be more of a staff question or applicant question. There's a sliver that's in the CNEL on the map of the northwest upper left side corner. Is that a buildable area? Or am I supposed to look at the safety compatibility zone as the buildable area? Or is there an exception to the rule to build in that if there's a sliver?
Greg, maybe, maybe Patrick and I can address that. Commissioner Wigan, are you looking at the conceptual land use plan and the footprint of the building? Is that where you're looking at it being within the 65 CNEL?
Yeah, this, this map here.
Yeah. So we show, and the, and the PC text would allow for certain accessory residential or non-residential amenity space to be within the 65 CNEL. So that could be parking, that could be fitness, that could be open space adjacent to the, to the residential. So it's a bit confusing with the coloring. So it's intended to be amenity space within the 65.
Got it. And then my other question was the RENA application. You had mentioned in the, in your report, the applicant's report, but staff, do we know if, you know, depending on timing of this, is this going to be applied to the new RENA numbers or our old RENA numbers?
This would be part, if it was, if this was approved, depending on when it was approved, it would be part of our land use inventory that would show a site suitable for residence development. And then if the development agreement also showed the affordable units in there, then, then yes, it would all, it would all be counted as in our site inventory as showing general plan designation and zoning that we can use to accommodate portion of our RENA requirement. Because remember, the RENA requirement is you have to have the zoning for the RENA. You don't have to necessarily build it, but you have to provide the zoning at a certain density to have the opportunity for the, for the affordable units to be constructed.
And that's in the future cycle of RENA numbers, not this current one. So this will apply to this 5,000 or whatever the number we have to get to.
That's correct.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Other commissioners questions for the applicant? Commissioner Elmore?
Yeah, quick question. Who, who owns the office building that is in the middle of the entire site? That is not part of the site? Do you know?
Commissioner, is that the building that, sort of the notch in the site plan?
Yeah, that's correct.
So that, the last name is Pham. It's about a 20,000 square foot parcel. And as, as Patrick said, initially, when we submitted the application, she, the owners granted authorization for us to include that piece of property in our application. So it was included in the site plan and then later rescinded it.
And, and, and just to make sure that I'm referencing this property, that's the, not the sliver on the outside, but it's the, it's the building right dead smack in the middle of the, that's still, I'm looking at the page, the legend that has the yellow outline of the site, the cutout. And I just want to make sure.
Yeah, from, from Greg's presentation?
Yeah, in my book here.
Yes, that's the site, Commissioner Elmore.
Okay. So we're, we're talking about the same, the same, that's the Pham building?
Correct.
Okay. And there, and there's no desire in your commerce communication with them, they, they, no desire to, to be a part of the bigger, the bigger site?
There was, and they quote, rode along with us for, what, a year and a half or so? And at, at some point in that process, they wanted to put a different type of use upstairs and they had put some pretty significant tenant improvements into the building. And so they elected to withdraw their, you know, portion of this application with us. And we had some follow-up conversations and said, don't you think it's a good idea for long-range planning to stay in the application? And they said, ah, we're, we're fine. So, yeah.
Appreciate that.
All right. Further questions, commissioners? Yes, Mr. Rosin?
I was just wondering if the applicant was planning on giving this commission an opportunity to review the planned community development plan in one of these study sessions or if they were bringing the entire application forward at one time?
Well, Commissioner Rosin, yes. The applicants have submitted a planned community plan and we're working with them right now. We're reviewing that plan and looking for ways to adjust it, to approve upon it. What we really want, a lot of these planned community documents, and pardon me if I go on, a lot of the planned community documents, I think that the commission has seen in the past few years, a lot of them have a development plan with it, whether it's Vivante or the, the residential care facility for the elderly over there off Bristol. They have the, they have an actual, a development proposal with them. So what, what we want to be really careful with right now is to make sure that the zoning really works for the long-term without an actual project seen. And so that's, that's the main thing that we're really concerned about. We want to make sure that the zoning's right for the, so the project, when it, when the development finally comes forward, it's what was envisioned for the site. And it's something that the, that the community wants to see. It's something that fits the site well. We do have some development standards. For example, there's an 85 foot height limit in there. And so it would be, it would allow for some of that higher density on that area. But again, we're, we're working through the details and the organization of the plan because we really want a good plan that can stand the test of time.
Very good. The chair has two small questions. Tell us about the retail component. I see a little strip building on MacArthur and a little tiny box on campus. Is that going to be enough to support residential units for people who want to walk to get food?
I anticipated this question from you as a retail expert. We, we did two things in order to, to plan the retail. Number one, the math. We, we took the existing box of entitlement that was allowed under this general plan and the existing EIRs. And as you know, retail, unless you are granted some sort of reduction in intensity as part of an incentive because the people are going to walk to it, it actually takes up quite a bit of traffic intensity and parking intensity. And so one of the guiding principles was establishing an amount of retail that would be truly residents serving and not serve necessarily as a destination retail center, which would have additional parking and traffic demands. And then the other concept that went into it was looking around at the existing retail in the area and the existing retail on site that will be moved as part of this application and trying to come up with a number that was appropriate, given what's out there today. And as you all know, what's out there today sometimes does well and sometimes doesn't do so well, depending on the cycle we are in the economy. Some of those restaurants have changed hands a few times. Some of them have been payers of rent. Some of them sometimes are not payers of rent. And some of the existing little retail stores have opportunities to move elsewhere in the area and others would have an opportunity to stay quote on-site. So those were the two principles that went into setting the amount of the retail that we were proposing as part of the application.
All right. Thank you. And I noticed that strip retail red on MacArthur, there's a driveway access to the existing office retail. You must have some kind of an access agreement.
We're, we're looking for, can you tell us which slide you're looking at?
Our site plan has a red linear building on MacArthur, adjacent to the residential. There's a driveway parking, there's a parking lot and a little access to the existing, not a park, retail office. You see it?
We do now. Thank you. We've got it up on our screen. So I'm going to let Sean speak to that. He's got it up on his screen closest to him.
So Commissioner, just, I think the first point to make is that this is a conceptual site plan that was really made to prove out the concept and to show that we could fit the density and the intensity of our proposed uses within the project site. So having said that, looking at the general plan policies for the airport area and sort of the city's desire, one thing we heard and saw was a desire for a substantial setback along MacArthur for the residential uses. Because that's a large, well-traveled corridor. And since a lot of the MacArthur retail does, do fairly well, to concentrate some, some retail there. So although it's not, actually, it is shown on one, on one site plan. It may not be the one you have, but the model that we created shows about 17,000 square feet of retail right there on MacArthur. That's the strip that you're looking at. But there's no, the PC text doesn't commit to that necessarily. It's, it's, it's an option that fits within the PC text, but it's not a, it doesn't have to be there. It doesn't have to be that exact amount.
All right. Thank you. One last question. Phasing, generally, what would you look at phasing in this whole process?
You know, it really depends on who the end developer ends up being, based upon, so obviously, they're going to have to build a parking structure as, as kind of the first, you know, concrete structure that they then either build podium or more likely some wrap, you know, or maybe even a hybrid of wrapping the units around the parking structure or placing them on, on top in a podium. So they would phase it in basically as best they can, whether it be, you know, unit by unit, or whether it be all as one phase. I've, I've had lots of different projects with lots of different residential developers and no two of them do the same thing with regard to how they construct and release and, and finish their project site plan. It all depends on laydown areas and, you know, what's more efficient for construction.
As, as a general matter, though, the retail would precede the non-residential. The retail would come for, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the residential would precede the non-residential. The residential component would come first in terms of overall project build-out.
And then you're working your way down campus with the office buildings and the other uses?
Right. Yeah, those, a couple of them have some, I'm not going to say long-term, but mid-term arrangements with some of the rental car parking agencies. So some of the campus south development plan, I'm, I'm glad you told us what phasing you were interested in. I answered just on the residential. But on the overall site plan, yes, the, the orange would go decidedly first. The commercial would be a little more long-term in the future as some of those rental car leases came up.
And, and, and for that reason, we're asking for a longer development agreement term than some of the other recent development agreements in the city to allow for those retail and commercial and office leases to burn off so we can build the non-residential portion of the project.
Thank you. All right. No more questions from the commission. I take it. Now we'll go to the public comments. Phone number is 2949-270-8165. We'll start in the community room.
Thank you, Chair Kettig, members of the commission, Mr. Jim Moser. First of all, those of us in the community room have seen a tentative agenda of future meeting dates. And it indicates the actual legislative proposals for this are tentatively scheduled to come back two meetings from now on May 21. I'm, I'm wondering if we could confirm that that is the tentative plan. Number two, in Greg's presentation at the beginning, he spoke about the conversion from commercial uses to residential that is currently in the plan. The presentation made it sound like any entitlement that was currently in the general plan could be converted. The slide he showed, which was slide number seven, showed a little snippet from the land use element. It, it actually said it was replacement of existing structures. And I don't recall in the presentation, we have heard how much existing development actually is on this site currently. We have heard how much the general plan allows. It would be good to know how much is currently there and how this compares to that. Next, regarding the 65 decibel CNEL contour that we've heard quite a lot about, we saw that superimposed on the general plan diagram for this area. That line was presumably drawn in 2006. Those of us who follow airport issues know that that line, for airport purposes, is not a fixed line. It's actually based on monthly measurements. It moves. For the last decade or so, it's been moving out. So before the coronavirus problem, that line had probably moved out farther towards MacArthur in the last month. It's probably moved towards campus. I'm wondering how the movement of that line affects this planning. And then finally regarding the park and the waiver of that, if I recall, the Newport crossings project, the half acre park there is regarded as really minimal for the number of residents who were at that site. And so now it's a little startling to hear that that half acre park across the street from this will now be adequate not just to those residents, but for this even larger number of residents here. I'm not sure the waiver is appropriate. Thank you.
All right. Seeing nobody else in the community room, we'll take calls on, on this study session. 949-270-8165. We have them? We hook one?
Hold on one second. I thought Clarabelle said she had one. They hung up? Okay. We have none. Okay.
Okay. All right. Any additional comments or questions from the commissioners? This is a study session only. We learned a little bit. There's a lot more to learn. Seeing none. Thank you. We'll take a quick break right now. Secretary Laurel will be back online in a few moments. We close it out. Are we live now?
We're live.
We're live. All right. Now we're going into the public hearing phase. Speakers from the, on the phone or from the community room, you have three minutes to speak. Always be sure to state your name clearly. And we'll proceed on. Number, item number three, crab cooker signage and encroachments, PA 2019 dash 126, location is 2200 Newport Boulevard. Staff, would you give us the overview? Staff, would you give us the overview?
Give me a moment here, we're trying to get my screen sharing up.
We see you.
Thank you.
Need access to share, please?
Well, I can kind of start with a preface before that comes up, if that's okay.
Yeah.
So, thank you Chair Kettig, Planning Commissioners, my name is Ben Ziva, Senior Planner at the Planning Division. And the item before you, once I get my power up, which is a comprehensive sign program, oh, there we go. Let me go ahead and pause. Okay. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess that we're both in the Division, I'll give you a brief presentation overview about this project and what's before you for your decision tonight. Let's jump right in. So Crab Cooker, in case you don't know where the Crab Cooker is located, is at the corner of Newport Boulevard and 22nd Street. It's adjacent to or within the McFadden Square area. As I said, I'm sure many of you know where the Crab Cooker is located, so I won't spend too much time here. So some background that I would share with you is that the restaurant has operated for over 50 years and has had minimal aesthetic changes, as you can see in the black and white photo that is taken from a history book. I believe that photo is circa 1960s. So before it was demolished, you can see it retained a lot of the same charm and character that it had for years. So the current request, and this is right before it was demolished, is to essentially put back exactly what was there before for the signage, to retain the same theme and character that it had prior to demolition, and to also refurbish and retain the standing clock that you see in the public right-of-way, as well as the public benches adjacent to the 22nd Street frontage. So in order to get that through the entitlement process, the applicant is requesting that you approve a comprehensive sign program, a modification permit to allow deviations from the sign program allowances, and then also a unique one that's actually never come to the Planning Commission before is the heritage sign designation for the "Don't Look Up Here" fish-shaped sign. Also requested to allow the clock and the public benches on the side is a council policy L6 waiver. You'll notice I put these two-letter designators in parentheses, which designate zoning administrator, zoning administrator, planning commission, and planning commission. So typically, a sign program and a modification permit would go before the zoning administrator. However, because of the heritage sign designation and the council policy waiver, the entire package is coming to you tonight for your decision. So the sign program modification permit, I'll provide you a brief overview of the intent. It's to create a unified statement for the building, again, creating that characteristic theme for the Crab Cooker. It formally memorializes all the signage, so I should mention that prior to demolition, the Crab Cooker did not have a sign program. Everything that was on there was added over time and legal non-conforming. As I said, it allows the maintenance of the historic character and continuance of the thematic branding for the Crab Cooker restaurant, and it won't appear incompatible with the surroundings. It is a rather eclectic area. The McFadden Square area is dubbed an entertainment hub by the general plan land use element, so there are a lot of different signage mixtures within that area, especially across the street. As I would note in the staff report, strict application of the zoning code allowances for signage would strictly limit the reestablishment of the branding that Crab Cooker had prior to demolition. And again, the intent is to recreate that with the new and improved building. So the heritage sign is probably one of the more interesting parts. It's the iconic "Don't Look Up Here" fish-shaped sign. The criteria for a heritage sign request is to be historically significant. In our code, historically significant is erected at least 35 years ago. As you saw in the first picture I showed from the book from the 60s, that sign was there, so it's been there well over 35 years. It is visually significant, it's a unique sign, it's uniquely shaped, and it does characterize the restaurant and its offerings, as well as the seafood market that is within the restaurant. And I would note that once it's designated, the applicant is not able to alter that sign, so it rather protects it for the future and creates it as a heritage sign designation that cannot be altered in the future except for routine repair and maintenance. Again, as part of this request, you have a council policy L6 waiver, one being for the existing clock that would be removed, refurbished, and remade to working condition. I guess it is not currently working today, so they would like to make it functional and then replace it in place where it is located presently. And the second request is to allow a 15-inch wide bench that would encroach part into the public right-of-way on 22nd Street to allow for queuing and the public to sit when they are waiting for admittance into the restaurant. So just to go over the entire request, the draft resolutions that are before you, there is a resolution for the signage and the heritage sign designation, and a separate resolution for the council policy L6 waiver. I do note on the screen that the Public Works Department has reviewed and supports that encroachment and the policy waiver. And the approval, again, allows the continuance of the iconic restaurant theme. So with that, staff is recommending you hold a public hearing, you find the project exempt from CEQA, and you adopt both resolutions approving the project. That concludes staff's presentation. I do know that the applicant's representative, Maris Di Pasquale, should be on the line, and the business owner of the Crab Cooker, Jim Wasco, should be on the phone line as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Commissioner, do you have any questions over the staff presentation? There's a couple of you. Commissioner Wigan?
Yeah, I just had a question on the encroachments. Across the street, we approved a while back, the Taco Bell had a carryout window, per se, that you could access from the outside. I'm not suggesting anything or asking that to be done, but I'm just kind of curious the thought process for future applicants, per se, but maybe in this one in particular, because it's kind of off, it's a busy street, but it's not really a pedestrian street off to the side there as you go back towards the view. But what about a similar type of window? Now with this COVID crisis we're dealing with, restaurants are coming up with strategies to serve more clientele in a more protective manner. I'm not sure if it works for this particular design, but it could be something the applicant might be interested in. I know that we're trying to keep it as close to a heritage look as possible, but I'm not sure if that helps, you know, businesses. So maybe staff, when we're looking at these things for future, we're gonna come out of this crisis with a lot of businesses struggling, especially in the restaurant industry. So I'm just wondering if we could keep a lookout for potential opportunities to get creative on things that might be beneficial to business without impacting the cities. So just a suggestion, I'm not saying we have to do anything. It's something that kind of piqued my interest as this crisis is going on and as this applicant came forward, so that's all.
Thank you. Other Commissioners question? Oh, I have one, has to do with the old photograph and the news racks out front. I would hope, due to the fact that it's a narrow sidewalk, that those would not be replaced. Staff, is there any concerns about that?
Thank you, Chair Kettig. So staff looked at the picture that you're referencing, I actually put it up on the screen for you, and looked at the Google Street View, and it appears as though those news racks have not been in place since at least May 2016. However, that does not preclude them from being proposed again, and that would be a separate encroachment request.
All right, I would hope they didn't, but, so, yeah. What about trash enclosure? Is that in the back, the same location where it will be in the back where it was?
As approved on the use permit and the coastal development permit for this project, the trash enclosure is actually within the former building footprint, so it's a big improvement in what was there before.
All right. No further questions from the Commissioners? We will proceed on to get, first of all, were there any exhortee communications from our Commissioners? Raise your hand. Seeing none, let's move right along. Quick reminder again, 949-270-8165. All right, let's move on to the public comments. We'll do the phones first, then we'll do community room.
Presentation by the--
Which one? What?
Presentation by the applicant.
Oh. Commissioner, I was reminded by the Assistant City Attorney, applicant would like to make a presentation?
Is the applicant on the phone?
Yes, we are.
Sorry, when were you?
So we're unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Chair Kettig. My name is Maris Di Pasquale, and I represent the Crab Cooker. We want to keep it very brief tonight. We've been working towards this day since the end of 2014, when the building was originally damaged, and we want to reiterate that we are in full agreement with the staff report, their findings. We concur with the conditions of approval, look forward to your deliberations. And I'm gonna hand over for about 40 seconds to Jim Wasco, who is the patriarch and owner of the Crab Cooker. Jim?
Good evening, everyone. As Maris said, I'm Jim Wasco and the owner of the Crab Cooker. I don't have a presentation this evening, but I wanted to take a quick moment to acknowledge and to thank our planner, Ben, the entire city staff, from planning to public works, and of course, the building department, especially Dan Kennedy and Kenneth Wong, for the excellent work that they have all done, and for the kind counsel and guidance that they provided us throughout this entire five-plus-year process. So thank you all, and we very much look forward to welcoming diners back to the Crab Cooker of Newport Beach in the near future. Thanks again, and I'll hand it back to Maris.
Thanks, Jim. So we're available for questions if anything arises. Otherwise, thank you for your time, and we'll just sit and do this virtually now.
All right. Jim, thank you very much for attempting to bring this back to life. My other last question for you was, are you gonna keep the same menu? You're gonna keep the same recipes?
Same menu, same recipes. We were able to salvage 10 employees, actually 12, from Newport that we brought up to Tustin. And so we're still smoking fish and making chowder for Tustin, and we very much look forward to bringing it back to Newport Beach, our home.
Very good, thank you. All right, let's go to phone call-ins.
Your questions?
Which one?
Commissioner, questions for the applicant?
I don't think that-- Commissioner, do you have any questions for the applicant? I don't see any. Thank you, for reminding me. Call-in comments? Community room? Community room? All right, well, I'm following your deal. Okay, next, it would be the community room comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Kettig, members of the Commission, this is Jim Mosher. First of all, regarding the sign resolution, the staff report didn't seem to address the sign that is not shown in these renderings, it's on the rear of the building, facing a street called the arcade. It would be good to know how that deviates from what is normally allowed. And number two, it's a principle, as I understand, that the city does not generally regulate the copy, the text that is on the signs. So what you're pointing is the sign inventions, not necessarily what they say. But on the other hand, we have not heard many applications for heritage signs, so I am wondering whether this approval requires the copy on the heritage sign remain as it is, or if future owners would be allowed to change that. My second comment has to do with the second resolution, which has to do with encroachments. That old vintage photo showed not only the news racks, it showed a lot of bicycles that were tied up for public occurrences that are in the sidewalk or adjacent to it, like a stop sign. In the encroachment proposal, I did not see where bicycles would now be going. As a bike rider, I would be tempted to tie my bike under the railing that goes onto the ramp by the entry, but normally, the encroachment would have, I would, I must, there is a place where bicycles on private property. I'm wondering where they're going and how they're gonna impact the sidewalk. It may be a temporary phenomenon, but there's been considerable new reason in bicycling in the city, I've noticed during the coronavirus pandemic. So it would be good to know how that's gonna be handled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any further questions from the public room? No. We have another call-in. Please state your name. Chair, call it again. Hello, are you there? Call-in?
Hi there, yes, I am. This is Charles Klob calling. I'm not able to listen to Jim Mosher's comments. Firstly, I want to thank Ben for a great presentation. Thank you. Secondly, the community completely supports everything to do with the Crab Cooker and their history and their ownership. And lastly, I hope that in your motion tonight, that you consider Jim's written comments about this particular project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Wigan?
Just to follow up on the last call, the mention of Mr. Mosher's letter, I apologize, I didn't get to it. I assume that's the same thing he was referencing in his comments, is that correct, Ben?
He referenced part of it, Commissioner Wigan, not all of it.
Is it mostly related to the bike racks? Is that, and that would be two people asking about those bike racks, if that were the case?
No, there's parts about the signage and concerns about why this was separated from the overall approval for the use permit and the coastal development permit, as well as the technicalities of the public gearing and how it's being conducted, and then concerns about the public right-of-way encroachment and some of the facts to support those findings.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We have another caller. Please state your name. Are you there? Caller number two? They hung up. All right, very good, or not good. At this point, no additional comments from the Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll make the last comment, then we're gonna do a roll call vote, I'm told. I thought this application was a little fishy, but I won't be crabby about it. How's that? Let's do a roll, I need a motion, please. I see Mr. Elmore is ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve.
Do we have a second, please? Commissioner Klein?
Yes, I can bet.
Thank you. All right, roll call vote. Commissioner Rosen, raise your hand. Commissioner Klein, raise your hand. I'm reading from a script. Commissioner Faustheimer, raise your hand. Thank you. Commissioner Elmore, I assume, you've made the motion. Commissioner Lowry, thank you. And Commissioner Wigan?
Hi.
Very good. And myself, I raised mine. Very good. Thank you all. All right. Staff, that was unanimous? All right, do we need to say anything more? Good luck, and I appreciate your rehabbing that building from new, from old to new to old-looking. All right, let's go to item number four. Are we ready? Staff, I'll introduce it, 501 Park Avenue Restaurant, PA 2019-238. Site location is, believe it or not, 501 Park Avenue. All right, remember the phone number, people out there, 949-270-8165. 949-270-8165. Staff, please make the presentation.
Good evening, Chair Ketting. Thank you, Commissioners, for being with us tonight. My name is David Lee from the Planning Division. Tonight, I'm presenting 501 Park Avenue Bistro, the conditional use permit. The request is for, one, to upgrade the ABC license from a Type 41 beer and wine, Type 47 On Sale General for the existing restaurant; and, two, to extend the hours of operation to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., when currently, the operation goes from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And also, for the continuation of a previously approved parking waiver, which was approved in 2014 through a conditional use permit approved by the Planning Commission. So a little background, the restaurant is located on Park Avenue and Aggett Avenue on the corner. Restaurant was established in 1961 as a mixed-use building. There's existing apartments above. The subject property is zoned as mixed-use, and as you can see, it's located in a block that's-- a mixed-use block, surrounded by other-- a lot of residential around them in that brown color. Nearby uses include Baboa Island Park, as well as the ferry. Give you a quick tour of the site plan. The existing restaurant includes a dining area and a wine bar. There's also a coffee bar takeout component to the restaurant, which has minimal seats. And there's a large outdoor dining area, which abuts both Park Avenue and Aggett Avenue. The existing parking provided onsite is in the form of three spaces, which are open-air, that are dedicated to the restaurant, as well as a non-conforming garage that serves the residential units above. Here's a chart that shows you the product details that show what changes between the existing and proposed use. So as we discussed, the alcohol licenses propose to be changed from 41 to 47. The hours of operation will extend by one hour. There is no physical alteration proposed with this project. As you can see, the net public area, takeout coffee bar, and also, the parking has no change proposed. The actual number of seats will reduce from 95 to 86. So for the parking, there are three parking spaces onsite that are dedicated for the restaurant. However, there are 27 spaces that are required by the zoning code. These spaces were waived in the 2014 use permit by the Planning Commission. However, during that approval, there was a mathematical error in the staff report, which caused the Planning Commission to waive 23 spaces when they should have waived 24. So there's one unaccounted space that was never waived. Staff is recommending that we continue-- that the Planning Commission continue the previous parking waiver with the waiver of one additional space due to the fact that the Commission found three spaces sufficient for the restaurant in 2014. And since that approval in 2014, there's been no increase in the floor area or seat, and also, no additional parking is required by this project alone. Argument made for the parking waiver in 2014, and which is still true today, is that Baboa Island is a densely populated area. As you can see in the photograph, there's prominent walking and biking from both visitors and residents nearby. And also, that this restaurant is in the middle of a residential neighborhood and seeks to serve local residents as a food service. In terms of the alcohol and hours, the project has been reviewed by the Police Department. It's located in Reporting District 42, which has no undue concentration, is a low-crime area, and also, has no late hours associated with the project. So Police has no objections to this request. And staff believes that we can make the findings for the project as it's consistent with the mixed-use general plan and zoning destination. The restaurant is a public convenience surrounding neighborhood and visitors, and also, it has operated with current building and parking configuration without detriment to the neighborhood. I would like to add two conditions, and thank for Mr. Mojer for pointing these out. These conditions should be carried over from the 2014 resolution. The first one is that the existing parking lot shall be maintained with the approved traffic markers or painted white lines, not less than four inches wide. All three parking spaces on the site shall be accessible and usable for vehicular parking at all times. And number two is that restaurant employees shall park their automobiles in the municipal lots on the Baboa Peninsula. The applicant or operator of the facility shall purchase parking permits for eight employees on an annual basis in the municipal lots, and shall direct employees to park in said lot. And again, these are from the 2014 use permit that we want to carry over. So the recommended action is to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA under Class 1, approve the conditional use-- number 2019-053, which will supersede the previous resolution approved by the Planning Commission, which is Resolution 1945. That's my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and I believe the applicant is also available as well.
All right, here we go. Any questions of staff, Commissioners? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on. Commissioners, any ex parte communication? I don't see any hands going up, all right. Quick reminder, everybody wants to phone in, Let's have a presentation at this time by the applicant?
Right. Right. There they are.
I see them moving around.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission, and staff. Truly appreciate what you put together tonight. It's an opportunity to speak and be heard and move this project forward. Really very excited. We've been operating 501 Park successfully now for about nine, 10 months. We put ourselves out there to the community and really worked to elevate what is an iconic space. Used to be well-known as the Park Avenue Cafe. We've just seen a ton of great feedback. Building has obviously gone through a lot of changes, but we've been excited to really start to create some foundation. We've done a lot of public discourse and reaching out and wanting to connect. We feel that this elevation to the liquor license, as well as to the one-hour of operation, really is a win-win for the community and for us as the business. And we appreciate your time. I'm certainly here to answer questions as well.
Commissioners, question of the applicant?
If you could ask if these were an agreed condition.
I have-- I have one question, probably two. I see on your floor plan, you have a garage that says "storage garage." Is that really a garage, or is it really storage? It's in addition to the three?
It is a non-conforming garage. It is used as storage.
So you're not going to park your car in there?
No, I don't believe it's-- it's large enough for a golf cart.
All right. Is this going-- is there going to be a bar area? And is that bar area-- or is it-- are you serving alcohol to the tables?
We are. We're currently serving beer and wine. The bar area itself has five seats. Two of them are compliant with the handicap laws, and then we have three other bar seats. But yes, the remaining restaurant seats would be serviced as well, as they are now.
What I'm asking is, so there is a bar, and people can sit at the bar in order not eat?
It's-- no, that's-- I guess, yes, the answer to that is correct. Yes, there are five seats there available for bar seating.
All right. And tell us why you want-- you need to go from 9:00 to 10:00 p.m.?
I think we've recognized when daylight savings kicks in that we've got-- you know, we've got guests that are wanting to kind of finish off the night. Obviously, we're taking care of a lot of the local clientele. So that additional hour really just allows us the benefit of allowing the night to be finished. The guest experience gets to be completed in a kind of a more traditional fashion, based on the fact that a lot of people during the summertime are coming out to dine closer to 8:00, 8:30. And it just allows for kind of a more fluid completion of the experience.
All right, those are my questions. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions of the applicant?
Chair Ketting?
Yes. Who rings here? Oh, Commissioner Kleinman, hello.
I had to stay silent on this one, did you?
Nope. Go ahead.
I do have a couple of questions for the applicant, and then also, some comments or discussion now or subsequent to that. But my question for the applicant primarily is a need to upgrade the liquor license. And I would like to understand-- I did visit the website. Unfortunately, I have not been able to visit the restaurant since it changed hands. I know it's actually changed ownership quite a few times, and there's been a lot of different discussion about what would be done with the property. But I'm curious to understand-- a quote-unquote "need" for this. Are you-- are you having patrons come in and ask for a hard drink that they're unable to get enough that it would justify this? And I would also like to understand what your current percentage of alcohol sales is, if you know?
So to answer your first question, yes. The initial-- all right, the most important element to our guests as they were coming in the door early on was that we really bring back the foundation of great food and great service. And so, in being able to really implement that, the next iteration was, well, you know, how can you enhance our complete dining experience? And, you know, can you start-- can you look at the option of providing spirits, distilled spirits, as a method of giving us a complete dining experience? We started to hear it heavily. Again, doing a lot of community outreach, that was one of the primary requests. We know that, obviously, you know, there's kind of a dual element. We know that it makes, you know, the business more competitive as far as people choosing us. You know, we've done our best to really maintain a, you know, a great wine list, to offer, you know, a limited amount of beer. And at the same time, you know, offering a-- like, some more dynamic layer, you know, where we're able to do maybe some craft cocktails, elevate the experience that way. It's certainly been requested. Really, this is where the majority of the spawn's from. Your second question, I apologize. Can you repeat it? It's my food-to-beverage. I would say that we're probably-- I-- you know what I would be guesstimating? I know that we are significantly in the high leverage of food sales, which is great. Obviously, we want to bring great balance. I don't have the exact numbers. I'd be certainly happy to provide them, but I know that we are very food-heavy.
Okay, thank you. So my other question is-- sorry, are you able to hear me?
I am now, yes, thank you.
My other question is whether it's worth losing those seats. I see you-- you're asking for the upgraded liquor license, and you're losing some tables in this transition. You must feel strongly about the upgrade in the license.
If I may, I think that staff has been very diligent about wanting to make sure that this request came in with exacting and very proper information. So the seating arrangement actually isn't necessarily a modification. We do feel very strongly about the request and feeling that it's a win-win for us and the community. But I believe they wanted-- that staff wanted to ensure the very complete accuracy regarding how many seats are in the restaurant and what that use exactly was. So if I can be frank, I wasn't aware that I was losing seats, but I believe that David wanted to make sure that we were very accurate with the seating arrangement as it was.
Okay, great, thanks for that clarification. My final question for now, anyway, is-- I actually spoke with some neighboring residents, and I understand that you're getting feedback from some of your regular patrons and most of the people probably who are dining in the restaurant regularly are, I'm sure, neighboring people on the island there who walk or drive a golf cart or get there through one of those means. However, the feedback I got was that, while they do intend on continuing to be patrons, that they do also have a concern for the noise and that currently, at your 9 o'clock closing time, even though you are diligent about closing promptly, that there are people who linger, and there is a noise associated with that. And so, I just want to kind of check in with you and see if that's consistent with your own observations and get your feedback.
I appreciate that. I-- I can say that our group, and I in particular, have sought this similar-type feedback to see where kind of the-- met the road on the request. And I like to think that I'm pretty open and welcome, and I live on the island, and I live at the west end of the island as well. And I haven't heard this. And what I mean by that is, is I think that there is a desire to make sure that we are maintaining our noise practices. Like you said, I think the folks you spoke with then would say that we've been very good at honoring our commitments. So I haven't heard the same concern about a 10 o'clock closure until, I guess, I recently saw a notice, you know, from an individual who'd written in. I've welcomed these conversations. And so I wish I could give you more, but the folks that I've spoken with inside the restaurant and throughout the community that I also live in seem very-- seem very supportive, every-- you know, down to the last person wanting to say, you know, you know, will you be on top of it? Will you ensure that we're, you know, we're being managed? And fortunately for me, I've been able-- eight years on the island, been able to show a good level of integrity and meeting our obligations with that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the thorough response.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, let's take comments from the public. We'll start with the community room.
Chair Ketting, members of the commission, this is Jim Mojer again. My comment had to do with the parking waiver that you're being asked to approve and the correction from a 2014 approval. My understanding from the staff report is this is a mixed-use building that has two apartments above it. At the time of the 2014 approval, I believe part of the parking lot and the garage was supposed to be dedicated to those apartments. It appears over the years that the garage no longer serves them. It is, from the testimony you heard, has become part of the restaurant. I'm wondering how this is factoring in to the staff's estimate of how much waiver is required and where they believe those residents will park if they have no place on-site, or what would prevent them from actually using the restaurant parking lot, meaning that there were actually no offsite parking spaces available to the restaurant users? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mojer. Seeing no one else in the community room, we'll go to the phone line. Apparently, we have no phone in tonight. All right, not even for food. So with that, any further questions of Commissioners to the applicant or staff? I just have a small comment that, when you read the history of this specific location, seems like they did everything wrong and get their hands slapped over time. So I hope this is the last time that you need any kind of a variance for this specific use. All right, with that, no further discussion. Oh, there you are.
I just wanted to-- I just wanted to ask staff if they knew Commissioner Ketting or Chair Ketting-- we were probably the only Commissioners that were there when this similar-- the applicant came up with the Village Inn, and there was some-- came up with the Village Inn and there was some controversy. We had multiple hearings on the Village Inn and there was a lot of discussion about the changes that were going to occur there. Just curious if staff, you had any, any complaints related to the Village Inn? I know it's, it's a separate item, but, you know, this is the same operator and, you know, just want to see how their track record has been at the Village Inn.
No, I have not heard any complaints about Village Inn at all.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Remember, Mr. Commissioner Wigan. All right, hearing nothing else, let's proceed on for a, a motion. And we're doing a CUP on this item.
Chair, are you allowing for any discussion before asking for a motion?
Yes, I'll be glad to take discussion.
Sorry, Commissioner Lowry, did you have a motion or was, were you wanting to comment?
Well, I was going to make a motion, but if, wouldn't have discussion before, definitely let's, let's have a discussion before I, I make a motion.
Chair Kettig?
I didn't hear that. We lost Commissioner Kleinman. Oh, you're back. What was that question? I didn't hear what you said. Technical difficulties.
I, I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments I had.
Please do.
Okay, sorry, I can't tell if people are hearing me or not.
We're hearing you.
Okay, great. That, that's why I'm taking the long pauses. I, I'm losing some of the, the video feeds from everyone else, so I'm, I'm just going to keep talking and someone will let me know, I guess, if you're not hearing me. So obviously, I, as always, have some concern about alcohol licenses and, as Commissioner Wigan mentioned earlier, you know, I think we are in difficult times, particularly restaurants are struggling and I, I want to be cognizant of that. And I do understand that this restaurant probably needs this upgrade in their alcohol license to compete with the other restaurants on the island there. However, when I look at the floor plan and the layout of things, I have a couple of concerns. One, a bar. Two, there are quite a few outdoor patio spaces areas that are not insulated and not protected in terms of sound traveling to neighbors. And whereas, again, I do want to support the success of this business and allow them to compete with those other restaurants, I also want to pause and recognize that this is in a very different location and that is a very residential area. I mean, it's completely surrounded and very, in very tight, close quarters with its neighbors who are all homeowners. So I guess my other concern is that we've seen this property change hands a number of times while we may have confidence that this applicant will do all the right things and everything promised, and that may be the intention. I think people do have a tendency to linger, especially if they've had a few drinks or if it's a nice warm summer night or, you know, a ton of other factors. And I also want to be cognizant of the fact that we are holding this forum at a time when people may not be avidly checking our agendas and, and are potentially unable to show up, even if they're interested in showing up or able or a, a number of other things. So if it were me, and I guess I can make a motion, that I would, I would approve this, but I, I would like to limit the hours to nine, the 9:00 PM time that they currently have now. I just think there's too big of a risk and too many outdoor spaces where sound travels and, killer if we're granting the, the other request to upgrade their liquor license. It's a bit of a can of worms and, and a slippery slope. So those are my, those are my comments and I don't know if that's an official motion or if the applicant would want to comment or if other commissioners would want to comment.
Well, before we do that, I, I have to ask the applicant a question, please. That is, can you confirm with us that you've read all the conditions of approval, including the additional ones made by staff? And do you agree?
Yes, I have and yes, I do agree.
Thank you. All right.
Chair Kettig? Chair Kettig?
Yes.
I have something to add. When we were considering this project, we were not aware that the garage was used primarily for storage. We were under the assumption that it was serving the residential above. So I'd like to make it a point that if we approve it tonight, we're not, we're not waiving that garage space as parking. However, you know, if, if we do approve the project, the applicant will be giving up that storage space. It would need to be a parking space for the resident above.
Well, let's go back and, and ask the staff this question. That's why I brought it up. Is that large enough to park a car? Or do they have to modify it?
It's, it's currently a non-conforming garage.
There we go.
It's 16 feet, 10 inches deep and 11 feet, approximately 11 feet wide. So whatever, whatever vehicle can fit into that space, that's what, that's what it's, that's what it's there for. However, it should not be for storage based on the plans and what was proposed tonight for this project.
My old eyes read 16 feet, 10, 10 inches plus or minus on, on the length. And I can't read the width, but that's, that's not the important part. Front to back, so clarification has to be made by that. All right, so we're back to the applicant. I'm glad you're still at the podium.
Thank you.
Can you hear us?
I hear you well. Thank you, Chairman.
Probably too well, unfortunately. I guess that, the staff is telling us that that has to be a garage and not storage, at least on the ground.
Chair Kettig?
Yes.
Can I read a, a comment that was submitted from a resident on Babo Island?
Mr. Chair Kettig, there's a, there's an email that was, that did come in. It was distributed to all the commissioners, so everybody has it. Mr. Peter Paley, he's requested that it be read. He did not want to call in. And it's up to your discretion, Mr. Chair. The commissioners did receive copies of the email.
I read it. Did the other commissioner see it? Got a big yellow in it. All right, staff, what do you make of this request? Continuance?
No, it is a public, it is a comment that has been shared with the commissioners and our staff member, David Lee, has wanted to clarify the, the garage parking space. So all, all the, all the facts have been provided into, into the record.
In his third paragraph, it says, the restaurant has two parking spaces. I questioned that, I thought there were three. Now possibly four. One handicap and two parking spaces.
David Lee can, can clarify the parking spaces?
Yes, there are three parking spaces on site. As you can see by the plans, there are three spaces. And the garage space for the residential.
All right, so. Staff, what are we doing with this letter that was submitted? Just as part of the record?
Correct. You've received it.
All right. We received a letter from a resident on the island, Mr. Peter Paley of 201 Copas Avenue. It'll be part of the record. Meanwhile, we're back to the garage storage, garage space. Staff, are you making this an additional condition? That that has to remain as parking? That will have to?
Yes. We can add that condition into the resolution.
All right. Advocate, that's where this stands. I'll reiterate my other question. Are you in agreement with all the conditions plus the new one?
Yes.
Very good. All right, back to the commissioners. Thank you for coming back up to the podium. We need a motion and a second. Let's see.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations from staff on Agenda Item Number Four.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, and that, does that include the changes we just discussed?
Yes, it includes, it includes the changes we discussed.
Okay.
Sorry, can you clarify? I, I, I'm a little lost.
Well, the changes, the changes we discussed that David, that David had spoken to, I, I wasn't including Lauren. So if we want to have more discussion on Lauren's, I guess we can, or if others, others would like to, to speak directly to that, but just in terms of the, of the, what is in the Agenda Item Number Four and staff recommendations here, as well as the additional, additional requirements that David made evidence to us, those, those, that is part of the motion that I'm making.
All right, discussion on, we have a motion and a second. Let's, discussion on the motion. Commissioner Kleinman.
Well, my comment was intended to be a motion, but I guess that wasn't clear. So we obviously now have another motion and a second on the table, so that ship has sailed.
No, you can make an alternate motion, which would be voted on prior to if you can get a second.
Like I said, it sounds like that ship has sailed.
Or ferryboat.
Yes.
All right, we get a motion and a second and just a roll call according to the rules. Hello? You can raise your hand if you're, or agree to it.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here struggling because I really would echo what Commissioner Kleinman's comments were, but, you know, I can go ahead and support this application as, as the motion is standing right now.
And if I could remind everybody, this is a conditional use permit, that if they break any of these conditions, we can bring them back in and modify it.
Yes, but it also runs with the land, so if they sell the restaurant tomorrow...
And the new one, if they violate any of the conditions, they'll be back in. So Commissioner Kleinman?
I'm a nay.
Nay. Commissioner Kolschermeyer? Commissioner Elmore, you were the seconder? Yay. Commissioner Lowry, yes, you're the motion maker. Commissioner Wigan?
Aye.
Aye, aye. And the chair says aye. All right, motion carried. Six to one.
That's it, sir. Yes.
All right, thank you. Applicant, thank you. Do a good job. All right, we're moving along at a slow pace tonight. Page five, Gil Faro Cafe Tataria. Did I say that right?
Tataria.
Use permit amendment, amendment, PA 2019 162, location 111 21st place. Staff, please make your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Kettig. Commissioners, Ben Zadiba again with the Planning Division. I'll provide you a very brief overview of this project and just making sure you can see the presentation correct.
Yep, I can.
Thank you very much. So to give you an orientation, you'll notice this is actually just right across the way from the Crab Croaker, which is what you had heard at your third item tonight. This is located within the heart of McFadden Square. Just to provide a brief overview of the zoning, it is located within a mixed-use zoning district and specifically it is, again, located in the heart of McFadden Square, which once again is dubbed an entertainment hub in the general plan, land, and use element. It's supposed to have a healthy mixture of restaurants and entertainment-related uses. So it is situated in the right spot, if you will. So as some background, it has been historically operated as a restaurant. It actually started as a restaurant before a use permit was required, so it was legal non-conforming for quite some time. In 1998, the planning director at the time approved an outdoor dining permit to allow a small outdoor dining area. And then in 2001, the Planning Commission approved the use permit to allow a Type 47, a general alcohol beverage license with a food component. And there has been very little work done in the restaurant beyond routine repair and maintenance and maybe a few cosmetic upgrades that didn't require permits. So the current business operation, you'll note that there are actually two sets of permitted operating hours. And I'd like to clarify that these hours apply to the outdoor dining area as well. So actually, in the off-season, when the peninsula is less busy, the hour is less in terms of the closing hour at 12:30 AM daily, whereas in the busy season, the closing hour is at 1:30 AM daily. I'm not entirely sure of the logic behind that, but that is the current operation today. The Type 47 ABC license, again, is the mechanism that allows them to sell beer, wine, and spirits at the restaurant with the food component. And also note, there is no onsite parking for this restaurant, but that is typical for the area. The commission has heard applications for Stag Bar, Dory Deli, other restaurants and bars in the area that are under the same situation without any parking and they all share the public parking in the area. Currently, there is no happy hour, there is no allowed live entertainment, and there is no dancing allowed either. So just to show you the current floor plan, again, this is a testament to the fact that not much has changed. This is a very old floor plan from the original use permit approval. Just highlighting the interior seating area in blue, the back of house in green, and the small outdoor dining patio in the front in kind of a goldish color. So I know this is a lot of information, but I'll try to break it down for you. In essence, the request for you is to amend the use permit to change the hours of operation to eliminate the awkward seasonal change to allow 6:00 AM to 1:30 AM daily, year-round. That is primarily to allow a breakfast service for the restaurant. Serving coffee and breakfast offerings daily, so that is the reasoning for the earlier opening hour. Also notable is the request is to have no alcohol sales prior to 11:00 AM, so that is noted there for you. As far as happy hour is concerned, again, that's presently not permitted by the conditional use permit. However, the applicant is requesting to allow happy hour prior to 9:00 PM and not a late-night happy hour after 9:00 PM, which would be a little bit more in line with a bar establishment. Again, this is a restaurant. Also included is a request for live entertainment. The applicant is requesting to allow the live entertainment with amplified sound and to cease the live entertainment daily by 11:00 PM. And then as far as the alcohol license goes, the current alcohol license type is the Type 47. The applicant is requesting to add a limited Type 21, which would allow a small off-sale component for what is intended to be wine sales to patrons and anyone who is interested in the imported wines that Mr. Marucci brings to his restaurant. So this slide is a slight change. You'll see that staff doesn't recommend many changes beyond what the applicant is requesting. However, I will note that in consultation with the police department through the However, I will note that in consultation with the Police Department through the review process, staff is recommending that we do not allow amplified sound. In other words, it would be limited to acoustic sets only within the restaurant. So with that operational change, staff believes the fact, there are facts to support each finding for the use permit. Uh, just to go over a few, the restaurant has been operated historically, again, as a restaurant. It's not detrimental to the area, there's no complaints for Il Faro. Um, it allows expanded service with the breakfast offerings to its current patrons and anyone visiting the area. It is compatible with all the adjacent land uses in the McFadden Square Entertainment Hub. Once again, this area is more concentrated with restaurants and commercial uses. They're intended to serve residents as well as visitors to the area. Uh, there are several conditions of approval that minimize any potential impacts from the restaurant, and many of them are carryover from the current use permit, uh, which I should note will be superseded if this is approved. And lastly, there will be an operator license required due to the late hours and alcohol sales in conjunction with the amendment to this use permit. I just wanted to go over and highlight a few conditions of approval. Uh, so there are conditions related to, again, hours of operation. Uh, Condition of Approval Number 21 is one I'd like to highlight. It does talk about the off-sale license, the type 21, remaining incidental to the restaurant use. So with that condition, we are clearly stating the intent and limitation for the type 21 license. Uh, and then lastly, I would note that Condition of Approval Number 45 limits the live entertainment to acoustic sets. And with that, staff feels that all findings can be made in the draft resolution for approval. Uh, once again, the Police Department has reviewed this application because it has an alcohol license component and late hours. It has no objection to the project as modified with the acoustic set only for live entertainment. And the approval of this project allows the business owner to expand its offerings for a more viable business in the future. So with that, staff's recommending that you hold a public hearing, find the project exempt from sequel, and adopt a resolution approving the project. Before I conclude my presentation, I would like to just make a few simple corrections in the resolution, just so you're aware of them. So on handwritten page 29, uh, there is a typo for Condition of Approval Number 15. It should state, "No furniture, tables, or chairs shall extend more than 10 feet from the face of the building into the public right of way." So you'd be striking the "not" there. And then the last one would be to strike Condition of Approval Number 24 because it is duplicative of Condition of Approval 19. So that concludes my presentation. Uh, the applicant, Domenico Marucci, should be in the community room if you'd like to have him come up for a brief word. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, questions of staff on their presentation? I see Commissioner Wigan stand up.
Yeah, yeah, Ben, I, I think we, I was talking with Wendy Jo at the Police Department about this item related to the type 21. There's a type 20 and a type 21. 20 allows you to sell beer and wine, that runs with the 41. If you already have a 47, you have to get the 21. We'll be conditioning, um, in there, and I, I, forgive me if you, you said it and I missed it, but there won't be any sales out of there of hard alcohol. It'll simply just be beer and wine, correct?
So that is the intent of the applicant, and at your pleasure, we can add a clarification to Condition of Approval Number 21 on handwritten page 29. And we can clarify that the alcohol license, uh, shall be for the sale of wine only and shall be used, uh, or shall remain incidental to the restaurant operation. So we can add some language in there to limit the type of alcohol sold under that license. And I know that Wendy Jo has confirmed that with the ABC licensing representative, that we can add that restriction.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I'm comfortable, more comfortable with it because like Commissioner Kleinman said in the last, that it does go with the land. So, uh, you know, I'd like to hear the applicant on that if, you know, he's got homemade limoncello that he's trying to sell. Maybe that is the reason for it, but I think we probably could all agree that it sounds like it's a wine thing. But I'm happy with beer as well, um, if he's got some, you know, specialty beers that he wants to sell too. I, I don't think that's detrimental, but the, the hard alcohol, maybe that's something that should be more of a concern. But we can at least, I think, ask, uh, the applicant when it comes to that, uh, in that discussion. Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions of staff, please? Seeing none, uh, ex parte communication with the applicant? If, nobody, raise your hand if you did. Seeing none, moving on. The applicant is present to make a presentation or a comment.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, uh, good presentation, thanks very much. I, uh, as you know, the, the area and everything, we opened, I opened a restaurant in 1994. So since then, naturally, we have lots of issues with customer because they ask, and my answer is always, "No, sorry, it's not." An example, just an example, and why I'm asking for those kind of permits. Uh, yes, naturally, the operational hours are very confusing for mostly of the customer. Have, yes, winter hours, summer hours, so it's kind of difficult to schedule, uh, menu and advertisement and stuff like that. So that will help a lot. Regarding, uh, regarding, I'll give you some examples, the music. We have lots of requests, you know, the restaurant is not very big, it's only small, it's only 76 feet. So we have a smaller request of, uh, weddings, anniversary, and stuff like that. And, uh, of course, they wanna have some kind of entertainment, especially for weddings. So, and when I ask and tell them, "I'm sorry, I can't, I don't have permission to have any live music or anything." So that naturally is loss of business. And we do lose a lot of business because entertainment naturally, for a wedding, small wedding, a small anniversary, I'm asking only if one, one-piece band, I mean, not, I don't ask you for, uh, you know, for, uh, four-piece band. Just, uh, entertainment for someone who wants to use a DJ or one, one guy. And this is going to be only temporarily, I mean, not temporary, only requests for those type of. So, uh, also regarding the, naturally, yes, we do have a wine list, which 80% is Italian. So those wines are, you don't find them basically anywhere, no store or supermarket, nowhere. So naturally, customers come and they say, "Oh, can I, can I buy all this wine and take home with me?" And naturally, I say, "I'm sorry, you can't, you can't take it out." So there's another issue, so of course, always also revenue. Another, another thing, an example, nowadays, of course, online ordering, online, is everything online. Everything will stay home and have delivery. So naturally, we have pickup order, "Oh, can you send me, of course, the bottle of wine I love that much?" Of course, I cannot sell it. Because I cannot sell it. So everything is an issue always not to the customer because, of course, this type of license we don't have. So, this is it, basically. What else, um, it's over there that, um, uh, the same, basically. Now, if you have some question, I'd like to answer.
Um, I don't believe you stated your name, just for the record, is?
Yes, Domenico, Domenico Maurici.
Thank you. Want to get that done? Very good. Uh, Commissioners, questions of the applicant about his request? Keep looking down there. Yes, Mr. Wigan, Commissioner Wigan.
So, so you're okay with the acoustic music component of the, of the request? Or are you asking for something greater than?
Uh, no, no, just, uh, no, one, nowadays, you have one guy playing with a computer. He gives you a beautiful entertainment, beautiful music. So that's what I'm asking. Uh, some people want a DJ, you know, nowadays, you can play entertainment, party, just with the one computer, basically.
Uh, staff, what would be the, the decibel difference, you know, or limitation? I mean, I guess, it, it's kind of, it's kind of a tricky question I'm going to be asking, but if they've got a, you know, acoustic guitar player or just one guy playing?
Yeah, yeah, one guy playing guitar, uh, or whatever. Nowadays, the people, you know, they can play guitar and the computer with a different, uh, music. You can sing, you can entertain, things like that. So, uh, people, uh, customers, they will enjoy to have a party and entertain like that. So far, you know.
Let me, let me, let me ask staff, um, Ben, um, you know, what, what was the discussion at that level related to, um, you know, the difference between, you know, these, there are these smaller ambient sound DJ, you know, music versus, you know, acoustic, you know, I don't think what he's talking about is having, you know, a DJ that you'd have at a, you know, a discotheque, you know, he's talking.
Oh, no, no, no.
Some background.
You know, nightclub, no, no, just, uh, request when we are, when we have this song.
Yeah, let, let me ask staff, if, if, uh, if, if you may, um, just so they can just get an understanding as a commission, what, what's being asked for, for the applicant versus, you know, staff's interest on more than the acoustic side?
Yeah, so if, if I can start, so the, um, there is obviously the standard conditional approval about the operator containing the noise of the facility. Um, I do believe the primary concern with amplified music is having a house DJ on the, on the facility. And just to clarify a couple of things here, um, there's nothing to preclude the owner from applying for a special events permit for a wedding that would include live entertainment with amplified sound. Intent here is something that goes forward as an acoustic set that could be a homestay for the restaurant, let's say. So they could have nightly acoustic sets, and it wouldn't be something that would be precluded if they did obtain a special events permit, which is intended to allow them to operate outside of the use permit on a very limited basis for one single event.
Thanks, Ben, maybe, you know, on, on, on the side here, you, you two can talk about that agreement to, to, for that understanding. But I, I think it makes, it makes sense, there's, you know, a lot of concern with that area, why some residents, some people, um, to the high intensity. So there, that could be the main concern that would stop this, uh, other requests that are being asked. So, um, I, I think the staff's recommendation is, is fine on the acoustic level with the idea to the applicant that he can seek, um, greater intensity on a case-by-case basis.
All right, thank you. Comments, questions of commission? Uh, Mr., excuse me, Maurici, did you?
Yes.
Do you understand all the conditions of approval with the additional ones that were made? And you accept those?
Um, an example, I'll give you an example, just to, uh, an example. If I open for breakfast in the 6:30, 6:00 a.m., I cannot serve alcohol until 11:00. But now if someone wants a Bloody Mary, or if they wanna a mimosa, we're gonna mutter. Again, I'm gonna say, "I'm sorry, sir, or madam, I cannot serve because it has to be by 11 o'clock." Issues like this, you know what I'm saying? Now, naturally, entertainment, of course, if you have a party that you wanna stay later in the hours, now I can't, I have to say again, "No, I'm sorry, you can't." So hours are important, but you know, at this point, you know, if you're forced, I cannot say nothing.
Okay, let me try this one more time. There are conditions of approval, and there are some modifications made to Item 15, 21, and 24. I know only, that are dropping the words "not" there, I forgot what 24 is, but. And there was another one?
Striking.
Okay, we're scratching 24. We need to know from you if you've accepted those conditions of.
A few sorts.
Uh, Chair Ketting, this is Eric, and, and that will be, um, that'll be added, the one I mentioned about only beer and wine being, um, sold instead of alcohol with the type 41.
Yes, 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 I read it, I find it okay.
Commissioner Kleinman, comment?
Uh, I have a question for the applicant, um, about the walk-up window. It seemed like there was some, uh, confusion, or at least I was confused from the application, whether there is a walk-up window and whether the applicant intends on selling alcohol through that.
No, no, no. The, the window is only for actually selling some slice of pizza. No alcohol is gonna be sold by the window, of course not.
Okay, thank you.
Understand you correctly?
Yes, you did, I was, I was, uh.
No, no, no alcohol, no, of course not.
Ketting's comment, sorry. Um, and also, pizza sounds amazing right now, I wish I could walk up and have some.
Well, you're welcome when it's open.
Thank you. Um, I also have some points of clarification on some of these conditions.
Yes.
Uh, sorry, not for, not for you, uh, the applicant, but I guess just for other commissioners and for staff. Um, we have, I know we talked about clarifying, um, the off-site sales. There is a condition, number 42, from the Police Department that already notates the, um, the off-sale component shall remain incidental, so that's already in there. However, I'm not sure that that is specific enough, um, and speaks to the type of alcohol that we were discussing earlier. Um, I also wanted to bring the applicant's attention to Condition Number 46 because I'm not sure if that would, uh, be put aside or set aside in the event that, um, I guess it would if he went and got a, um, a special event permit that would allow music, um, as well. But it does say no dancing here, um, which always makes me think of the movie Footloose. Um, and then there's Condition 48 as well, uh, that is a little confusing to me under the circumstances. The service and sale of packaged alcoholic beverages bottled or canned on the outdoor dining area shall be prohibited. Um, I don't know, I just wanted some clarification on those.
You asked me?
Staff, questions of staff?
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry for the awkward pause, this is a new way of doing hearings for all of us, so thank you for your patience. So, uh, with your questions, Commissioner Kleinman, thank you for those. So 42, I agree, it's slightly repetitive. I think Condition 21 is more upfront and direct as far as what the intended use is. Um, the Police Department's condition just elaborates a little more on the, uh, alcohol license and makes a statement from the Police Department standpoint. I think that they kind of work in harmony. 21 is more specific than 42. Um, I could see if you wanted to combine them, but, uh, as of right now, I think they're okay as drafted. Uh, then with respect to dancing, as you stated, that is something that could be modified on a special event permit basis, uh, along with the live entertainment, um, DJ request. And again, that's only for a special event permit being issued, not on a regular basis. Um, and then lastly, with respect to the service and sale of packaged alcoholic beverages on the patio, uh, the intent there from experience and working at the Police Department is that, uh, it's a pro, or precluding the passing of drinks off the patio. If you put it in a prepackaged, um, container, then it makes it easier just to pass a can of beer or some sort of beverage over the fence to anyone passing by. Uh, that is the intention with that condition. And if I'm incorrectly speaking, Wendy Jo is here to elaborate if need be.
Okay, yeah, I was actually going to ask if she was here, because I'm just curious how some of these things are monitored. I mean, particularly, these, um, these various hours that are very specific, uh, happy hours. I, I mean, how, it just seems like a monitoring nightmare, um, for, for any wedding, but particularly for the Police Department, if the onus is on them to make sure that things are. for the police department, if the onus is on them to make sure that things are not unruly and are, are going according to the conditions that they've added here.
Ben? Do you agree?
Yeah, this is, again, the conditions that are in place are something that the police department recommends when they review the application. I do agree that some of these are rather challenging to enforce on a regular basis. I think that with any use permit, they are more something that we can lean on if there is a complaint from a resident or visitor about the establishment. But it does set forth the parameters with which the restaurant or any future restaurant at the site would operate, just as it is with any conditional use permit.
All right.
Thank you.
Everybody settle down and ready to go? We're going to buckle up on this one? We need a- Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any phone calls on this one? We've got a phone call. I think they're, we're going to order a pizza. Thanks. Hello, are you calling in? Hello? What is that?
They put us on hold.
Okay. Is that our staff member by the podium?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no further comments in the community room.
All right. I'm just waiting on the phone people. Somebody on hold?
They put us on hold.
Yes.
They're going to call back?
We'll see if we're not sure.
Okay, who's got the clock? This is not a good plan.
Hello again, this is Charles Globe. I'm going to assume that this is being recorded and you're going to hear me in a few seconds. So firstly, like many locally owned restaurants in Newport Beach, we want to support them as best we can. And the, as Ben explained, it's very difficult to enforce the various conditions. Next door to this restaurant is the Blue Beat, which has had an entertainment permit, a amplified music permit for many, many years. I don't see any reason why that couldn't be allowed at this establishment unless some resident complains or calls in. I can't see how it would matter. Amplified sound allows a DJ or a acoustic guitar with amplification. So hopefully you can hear this. And it's a little rocky tonight. It's gone, it went better at the council meeting a week ago. The delay needs to be understood by the folks in the meeting as well as the residents. So thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Can you hear us? Thank you for the call. All right, there's somebody supporting acoustical music. Ben, tell us where we are on the music side. We figured out the alcohol sales. I keep looking for them there for Ben.
Chair Ketting, Chair Ketting, to clarify, I believe the caller was supporting amplified music, not acoustic.
Yes. All right. I think we discussed that, didn't we? Wasn't it in here?
So as drafted, the resolution would limit the live entertainment to acoustics that's only. And actually, one clarification that I didn't mention earlier, the conditional approval number 45 should include live entertainment ending by 11:00 PM. That was not included in there and that's an oversight on my part. But it does limit it to, again, acoustic music as currently drafted.
Well, my read says acoustic sets only and shall cease by 11:00 PM.
And there must be a duplicate condition, Chair.
There you go, it's in there. All right. Commissioners, are we wrapping this up? I don't see any calls coming in. Okay. So anybody, we'll, we need a motion now and then I was handed the list of changes to the conditions.
Commissioner Wigan?
Oh, you've had your two, but I'll let you go over.
Ben, can we go back to, is there a way to allow him to have something greater than acoustic in a reasonable sense? You know, I remember when we did the Nobu, there was an ask to have some music and I'm dating myself now too far and I probably can't remember exactly, but we gave them something that wasn't quite live music like the Blue Beat, but it was something where they could have some type of, you know, amplified electronic capability to, to produce some type of music. And I, I'm thinking that's what the applicant here is somewhat looking for. I don't think he's looking to, you know, go crazy with it, but you know, I, I'm just trying to kind of help a little bit here without getting too, too severe. I mean, the Blue Beat next door has three, four, or five piece sets going, you know, till pretty late and they're at a pretty loud volume. I don't think anything these guys are going to do or even be heard above that next door. So, you know, this is something different and I'm just trying to kind of grasp a little bit how to help him out without going too severe into it. So I don't know, maybe you can help me and maybe this is beyond us tonight to even do or I'm just looking to help a little, but without going too severe.
All right, thank, thank you. Commissioners, we need a motion and I have revised conditions handed to me if I can help.
Yep, I'll, I'll make the motion with the conditions. If you want to read them off, I'll support them.
Item number 15 changed the furniture to furniture. That was a tough one. Strike the word not. Number 21, limit the sale of alcohol to beer and wine. 24, we're going to strike altogether. There you go. Pretty easy.
Yep, I'm in agreement with that and we'll make the motion.
We need a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Rosine. All in favor, let's raise your hand. I'll read the list. Mr. Rosine, I assume yes. Commissioner Kleinman? That's a yes. Commissioner Klostermeyer? There's a yes with a wave. Commissioner Elmore? That's a yes because you made the motion. Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
There's a good one. Commissioner Wigan?
Aye.
Aye, and I approve it as well. It was approved unanimously, 6-0. If the applicant's still here, do a good job. Thank you. All right, let's move quickly into our other items here. We have staff and commissioner items right now. Item number six, motion for reconsideration. Never, never seen one yet. Yes. And item seven, report by the community development director?
Thank you, Chair Ketting, and thank you, commissioners. I know this was a tough evening. You know, we're trying to be, trying to keep business going and I appreciate everybody's patience. This was a huge production. We have about, we have the entire IT, IT department is working tight. They did a fantastic job for us. There's about eight people working on IT, another eight through community development plus Yolanda, the community manager's office. So tonight was a big production. I know it wasn't a perfect evening, but we really appreciate everybody's patience and, you know, we're, we're getting better at this and this won't be forever. You know, this is just a temporary fix until we get everybody back into the council chamber. So we appreciate it. Couple other announcements I want to talk about. Next Tuesday is the city council meeting. At the council meeting, the city manager is going to propose some budget cuts in this current fiscal year and some budget cuts in the proposed next fiscal year, which starts July 1st. And she's making those recommendations for the city council's consideration. So if you want to tune in for that, that's Tuesday evening. At the last council meeting on the 14th, the city council did, went ahead and approved a professional services agreement with our housing element consultant, Kimberly Horn. And we've, we've got them on board and we're starting to work on the housing element. We just started that process. The council did form a housing element policy advisory group. They haven't met yet and we are planning our first meeting possibly sometime in May. So more to come on that and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of the community development director? I have one, one announcement I'd like to make. Curtis Elmore and his wife recently had their first child three weeks ago. Little boy named Graham Robert Elmore. Isn't that wonderful?
Did they, they let you in the hospital?
Yeah, they did. They did, yeah.
But no family then?
Is he sleeping now or can you put him on the screen?
No, he's, he's down asleep downstairs.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Request for excused absences.
Who's going anywhere?
All right, everybody, great meeting. We did it, we got through it. Adjournment.